Let's call the meeting into order. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, I am your God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item on the agenda, Public Hearing on the Concerned Aloud Your Floor. Renee is going to start us out with the presentation of why we're here. And we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Paul, we have to add the agenda.
You have to add the agenda.
One second, ma'am. Second, my dear, phone favor.
Aye.
Jim, stop. Thanks. It's all yours.
Okay. This is a special meeting of the City Council. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to consider the tax increment financing application of Blackstone Estates, LLC. A little bit about this project where an apartment building is being proposed. It's located, the parcel is 3.1 acres in size, located on the south side of James Parkway, west of Dakota, just west of the townhomes that are under construction. The property is currently owned by Global Properties of New Market, LLC. It is currently zoned high-density residential, R4. Apartment buildings containing eight units or more are permitted in this zoning district. The City Council has previously approved a plat and conditional use permit for an increased building height. The approvals originally occurred in 2019 and were extended in 2020. The project could move forward as proposed today without the use of TIF. The developer has applied for both the land use approvals, which were granted, and also a business subsidy application. So, the purpose of tonight's hearing is not to take comment on the apartment building itself or the design aspects, because that has already been approved. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to consider the application for tax increment financing.
Renee, I'm sorry. If you go back one slide, the project can move forward without TIF?
It could physically, they could come to the city tomorrow and pull a building permit for it. That's their right.
Thank you, Dr. Paul.
To some of the point on to ask for that a little later. Again, the applicant is Blackstone Estates, LLC. This is a business entity that was formed specifically for ownership and management of this project. Eighty-eight unit apartment building. The project is proposed as a market rate building with an affordability component. Twenty percent of the units would be, are proposed to be affordable. There are multiple investors in the project. Paul Okason and Dynamic Homes, LLC are currently proposed as managing partners. And then there are also equity partners, Soul Pacific, HCI Real Estate, and Larry Ginsmer. Property is currently owned by Global Properties and would be transferred to Blackstone Estates prior to development. Just a little refresher for the City Council on some of the things we've talked about over the last year or two, some key terms that are important as we have this discussion about this project tonight. First, just market rate housing is housing that does not have any income restrictions imposed by government agency. Low-income housing is housing that is income restricted to households earning at or below eighty percent of the area median income. Affordable housing is when a low or moderate income household pays no more than thirty percent of their gross income on housing. And then you would be cost burdened. A household that pays more than thirty percent of their gross income on housing would be considered cost burdened. For 2021, the Minneapolis-St. Paul area median income for a family of four was $104,900. That income was identified by HUD. The most recent median household income they have for the city of Elquon Market is from 2019, and it's based on census data. In 2019, the census reported the median household income for the city of Elquon Market was $124,286. And with this particular project, twenty percent of the units, or eighteen units, would be affordable to those earning fifty percent of the area median income. I've included a table here, provided by HUD, that has the income limits by household size. So, we'd be shooting our, this line that I've outlined in red is fifty percent of the area median income. So, you can see different income levels for one, two, three, four, through eight-person The original application that was received by the city requested a total TIF amount of $2.1 million over fifteen years, and then an additional reduced amount for an additional five years. The project was proposed to start construction in approximately December of 2021 and with completion in September of 2022. Regarding the TIF application, which was received in April, the City Council held a preliminary discussion on May 27th, at which time they directed staff and Ellers, who is the city's financial consultant, to conduct a full detailed analysis of the developer's pro forma to determine if, in fact, the project really needed TIF assistance. The City Council, again, following the full financial analysis, received a report on July 22nd outlining the results. The results are the analysis primarily conducted by Ellers, and we have a representative of Ellers here tonight to speak to the council. The council at that time asked staff to not take any action on the application as the full council was not present at that meeting. The City Council, again, received the same presentation, the full detailed financial analysis, on August 12th, 2021, at which time they directed city staff to prepare for a public hearing regarding the TIF application and preparing the necessary documents. So, just a quick overview of what is tax increment financing. It's the ability to capture and use most of the increase in local property tax revenues from a new development, which in this case is the proposed apartment, within a defined geographic area, within that 3.1 acres, for a defined period of time without the approval of the other taxing jurisdictions, which is the county and the school district. What this means is that nobody's property taxes are going to get raised to subsidize the developer. It's just the taxes that are being generated from this particular development are going back into this particular project. Why do cities consider providing assistance to create or retain jobs, redevelop blighted areas, remediate polluted sites, achieve affordable housing, increase tax base, or change community market conditions? TIF is used to fill a financial gap and encourage a development that wouldn't occur without the use of TIF. And we refer to that as the but-for. The development would not occur but for TIF. In 2012, the city did adopt a business assistance policy. If a city is to give assistance to a developer, they have to adopt a policy which outlines, basically identifies tools in the toolbox. We do have a business assistance policy, and tax increment financing is one of the tools identified in the toolbox. The original intent was primarily job creation, to use businesses to incent job creation in the community. However, the policy specifically states that multifamily housing projects may be considered on a case-by-case basis. In any event, the City Council must identify the public purpose for using TIF. To note is that the City Council annually adopts goals and priorities for the community. And one of the priority goals adopted for this year is that the city will promote high-quality residential development that includes a broad spectrum of housing choices in both type and cost. The city also recently adopted its 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which contains a chapter related to housing goals. One of the goals adopted by the Planning Commission and the City Council was to provide opportunities for the city's share of affordable dwelling units and provide programs and incentives to encourage the development of affordable dwelling units. Minnesota statute also governs the use of TIF. Specifically, there's a housing TIF that can be created, and the goal again is to create affordable housing. The maximum term allowed under state statute is 26 years. However, the term or use of TIF is entirely set at the discretion of the City Council and based on a verified funding gap. State statute requires that either twenty percent of the units be affordable to those earning fifty percent of the area median income, or forty percent of the units be occupied by those earning sixty percent of the area median income. The developer in this case is proposing the 2050. Both the city's adopted policy and state statute require the city to conduct this, what's referred to as the but-for test, which means the development would not happen solely through private investment in the reasonably foreseeable future without the use of TIF. And the induced development will yield an increase in market value for the site compared to likely development that would occur without TIF. So, Ellers has conducted a financial analysis and determined that there is a financial gap. The project would not be financially feasible without the use of TIF. However, they have recommended that a 14-year TIF would be sufficient. Currently, the property has an assessed value of $432,000, and the city receives approximately $2,400 annually off of that property. And if you times that with no inflationary factors, times 14 years, the city would continue, and no further development took place on the property, the city would receive approximately $34,000 over that same 14-year period. If the project were to move forward with TIF, the city would retain ten percent of the tax, or the TIF revenue, which is estimated to be, over that same 14-year period, approximately $216,000. So, that would be retained by the city in addition to the $33,800, or in addition to the base value. Just looking at other financial impacts to the city, in terms of public works, we believe there would be very little impact financially to the public works department. The site is entirely privately owned. There's already roads, sewer, and water available to the property. All interior infrastructure would be owned and maintained by the private developer. Police and fire, there would be additional demand associated with eighty-eight additional housing units. It's somewhat difficult to quantify. Police chief is here tonight if there are questions about that. There would be an immediate infusion into the city's park fund of $64,000, into the city's water fund of $368,720, sanitary sewer fund, $192,544, and the stormwater fund of $22,952, for a total cash infusion into the city at the time of the building permit Quick review of the project, and these are bullet points that have really been provided by Ellers. The developer's proposed investment into this project is $18.23 million. They are planning to bring $2.6 million in equity. They're proposing to finance thirteen, almost 13.7 million. And the city's TIF note at $1.95 million would be approximately eleven percent of the overall project. Financing is proposed over a 30-year amortization at 3.8 percent. Ellers works for many cities across the state and upper Midwest, and they said this is the financing, as you see, meets expectations of what they would see in the market. Again, the current assessed value of the property is $432,000. We talked with the county assessor to determine what the estimated market value would be should the project move forward. The county assessor indicated the value would be between 12.5 and 14 million. This TIF analysis was based on 14 million. And because of that, if this project would move forward with TIF, the developer would enter into a minimum assessment agreement that the value would not fall below 14 million during the term of the TIF. Reviewing the per-unit development costs, $207,000 per unit. Ellers reports that similar projects, construction costs range between 200 and 275,000 per unit, so the per-unit cost is within the market range. Land cost is $9,091 per unit. Again, similar projects, land costs ranging from 7,500 to 15,000 per unit. So, the land cost for this project is at the lower end of the market range. The developer is proposing studio, a combination of one-bedroom and a combination of two-bedroom units. Market, or the rents, proposed rents range from $916 per month for some of the studios to $1,649 for the most expensive two-bedroom unit. Again, twenty percent of the units would meet the affordability component. In the pro forma, those are currently identified as the studio units. However, the developer will have the flexibility to provide an affordable two-bedroom unit or one-bedroom unit should somebody need that as well. So, there's a little flexibility built in. However, every year, the annual reporting, they have to report that twenty percent of the units are rented to people earning at or below fifty percent of the area median income. The developer is not required, but some of the rents proposed, even though they're market rate and not mandated, are more on the affordable side. And in working with the developer over the last several months, they feel that is just what the market will bear in Elquon Market. The operating expenses and management fees are, in the pro forma, are proposed at $3,055 per unit per year, which is lower than the typical market range of 3,500 to 4,500 per unit per year. The management fee is proposed at three percent of the effective gross income, which is within the typical range of three to five percent. The developer fee, often we see developers charging an upfront development fee to, for management of the project or planning of the project. The developer in this case is not charging an upfront fee. They're being paid from future cash flow. Typical developer charge could be an upfront fee of three to five percent of the project. Just a little bit about what the building will look like. You can see on many of the slides, there's been a rendering, but these drawings are taken off the actual construction plans. The first floor of the building will be parking, enclosed parking, which is going, consists of a pre-cast panel, so 28 percent of all of the building facades, each side, will be 28 percent. It will have a brick-looking finish. And then the rest of the building will be a combination of horizontal and vertical pre-finished steel siding. This is a rendering. It does not have the most current information in terms of landscaping. This is a picture of a pre-cast brick panel, and I know in the past, they had indicated there might be colored concrete, or haven't exactly determined the color scheme yet. In terms of landscaping, I know one of the council members had previously asked about landscaping and breaking up that first-floor parking garage, and the developer did provide some additional landscaping detail. So, on the left, you'll see a revised landscaping plan from what had been, has ever been previously presented to the City Council. They have incorporated bobo hydrangeas, three feet on center, with a variety of two-inch crabapple trees along the front of the building. And this picture here in the center is kind of an example of another building owned by the developer with that same type of landscaping. And then in front of the building, along the main part of the parking lot, is proposed two-and-a-half-inch diameter birch trees. Sugar maples are proposed along James Parkway and along the west side of the site, and then a six-foot black hill spruce along the east side to provide buffer to the townhomes to the east. Previously, the council expressed a couple of concerns or had specific questions about just making sure that the city isn't, wouldn't oversubsidize the project, that the numbers that are represented today might change a couple of years down the road, rents increase. So, included in some, the draft contract that is being presented to the City Council for consideration is a two-part look-back provision. So, Ellers would evaluate the developer's books, basically after construction, and three years down the road after project stabilization. So, the two-part look-back provision, I'm told, and Bruce can speak to this, isn't necessarily common. Usually, it's kind of the one, one review after project completion. Council also expressed concern about management of the project and just wanting to make sure that we're essentially not going to be a business partner with a project that's really poorly managed. So, there is some very specific requirements in the contract that involve the city's police department, just that they'd have repeated calls to a single unit or a specific unit. The police department would notify, hey, we had one incident, two incidents, and on three, that tenant would have to be evicted. And then if the management company was not performing to expectations of the city or the city's police department, the current contract allows for basically rescinding the TIF or terminating the TIF. And the council also wanted to be aware of any change in ownership or investors during the term of the TIF. So, there are, there's a section in there regarding that provision. So, based on staff's review of the application materials, the city's adopted business assistance policy, state statute, Ellers review of the application, staff makes the following findings that the project containing eighty-eight housing units is consistent with the purpose of the city's comprehensive plan and the zoning designation for the property. Project can be supported by existing city utilities, and no new public infrastructure will be needed to construct or accommodate the development. The Scott County Community Development Agency has identified the need for 124 shallow subsidy units for Elquon Market between 2016 and 2040. The project would provide housing that is income restricted to households earning between 50 and 80 percent AMI, which currently doesn't exist within the community, and has been identified as a goal in the city's comprehensive plan and council goals. And Ellers has determined that there is a financial gap in developing the project and that the project would not be financially feasible or move forward without the use of TIF. I'd like to introduce Bruce Kimmel with Ellers. He's with the city's financial consultant. He has a couple of slides. I'll invite him up to answer any questions and give a overview of the question.
Thanks, Renee.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. One thing I just wanted to mention about financial feasibility is, you know, this is a term that we often use in economic development, but what does it really mean? It doesn't mean that the project would not cash flow at all without TIF, but it wouldn't create a rate of return that we would expect to be reasonable within the current rate environment. When we ran the numbers without TIF, the ROI, or internal rate of return specifically that we used, as well as cash-on-cash, was significantly lower than what we would expect a developer to really require in order to put in their own equity into the project. And with the TIF even, it was still a relatively low on the spectrum of things rate of return. So, if you choose to move forward with this TIF, it's not like you're providing over-incentive. And it's also not to say that there's no way it could cash flow without TIF, but we wouldn't expect it to go forward without assistance because the developer is putting in a significant amount of equity, and they have, they have to have some reasonable expectation of earning a rate of return on their investment. So, I just wanted to clarify what we meant about financial feasibility there. So, a lot of my slides, I think, dovetail with Renee's, and we won't go into a lot of detail on them. For instance, we've already covered this, including the estimated market value of $14 million. Tom, did you have a question before? We don't need to go into a whole lot of the process. I think Renee covered most of this as well. There have been notices sent to the other jurisdictions, and we're here at the public hearing. I would note that most likely, you may or may not at least be considering the development agreement on the 14th. We can discuss that more later, but we are here tonight for the public hearing. Already covered the TIF, unless there's any questions on that and the pay-as-you-go note. I would say that 3.8 is a pretty modest interest rate. It is reflective of the fact that the current rate environment, whether you're borrowing money at the city level or for developers, is pretty advantageous, but still, we typically see pay-as-you-go note rates at least closer to five percent. So, I think 3.8 is advantageous for the city in that regard. We'll go into more TIF calculations unless you really want us to. But I would say also, the point of this slide is that there are quite a few taxes that are excluded from TIF. So, you already know that you're getting the base taxes that would otherwise be generated by the parcel, as is the school district, as is the county. The state's property taxes all go direct to the state, and so there are some deducts there from what the developer would actually receive in reimbursement for technological Now, I did want to note, Renee covered some of the key deal points besides the pay-as-you-go note, but you have really negotiated, I think, a very strong and advantageous agreement, at least in draft form. You know, it hasn't been completely finalized yet, but the key points that you asked for and that the development group agreed to really shows the city's financial rigor in wanting to protect both your financial situation as well as the overall benefit that this project will generate for the city. So, the minimum value assessment agreement is one of those elements that, you know, you want to make sure that once this is no longer providing reimbursement TIF, that once this project is no longer providing reimbursement TIF, that the city really has a significant addition to its general tax base. And so, that's the importance of that minimum assessment, assessed value. I agree. In addition, you are getting that commitment of eighteen units at or below 50 percent of AMI, and the other units that Renee mentioned also being relatively affordable for the Scott County market. You'll have?
Bruce, quick question. So, on that point, twenty, under state statute, 20 percent of the units have to be income restricted.
Correct.
The affordable units.
Right.
The remaining units are basically market rate.
Yes.
The developer may price them at a price that may be affordable by, you know, because of the amount, but they're essentially all market rate units.
That's correct. They're market rate. That's a great point, Tom. Ranging roughly, most of them between 60 and 80 percent of AMI on a de facto basis, right? It's not that you're requiring them to be income restricted in the same way as the 50 percent units, but you're going to have some ability for people in and around this community to be able to afford units, folks that, you know, are working jobs that are more medium wage. And so, I think that'll be a positive thing and consistent with your comprehensive plan. The look-back, I think, is another great example of you following and wanting to set expectations for best practices as it relates to TIF management. As Renee mentioned, it is often true that, especially with housing projects, we don't see look-backs because cities are so eager to- see look-backs because cities are so eager to have more affordable units in and of themselves. Here you're saying, yes, we want those more achievable unit rents, but we also want to make sure that we're not over subsidizing. If this project does much, much better than anyone expected, that there be some mechanism for adjusting the, the future TIF reimbursements. Management is a huge element as well. You're looking ahead, saying property management is everything. We want to make sure that this project fits into the community, is a good neighbor to the surrounding uses, and we think that's absolutely appropriate in this case in exchange for you providing this TIF assistance. And then next steps, again, looking at approving establishment of the TIF district that would not happen tonight and a development agreement that would specifically spell out the terms of the assistance and all the mutual representations between the city and the development group. And I think we've covered this, right? Yep. So why don't we, should we just leave this one up, kind of, or is there more after that?
I have more slides.
Okay. I'll turn it back over to Renee. Thank you.
I'm not going to read this because it's a rehash of everything that we've just explained throughout the process. Again, the purpose of the hearing tonight is to take public, to hold a public hearing and take input regarding the TIF application. I would, the council is aware, we have previously been working with the developer that passed away this past week. So we do have a development team here tonight that I guess I'd like to invite if you have anything to add at this point about the project. Dennis Johnson.
Sure. Can you hear me? All right. Thank you. That was a fabulous explanation of, I think, the project and the TIF process and things. My name's Dennis Johnson. I'm CEO of How Chunk Capital and I've got my group here. If you want to just kind of introduce yourselves here.
Paul Okuson, President of Dynamic Homes, Detroit Lakes, Minnesota.
Dan Burskin, Project Manager for Land Logic.
And Greg Strong with Foundations, Architecture, I'll be the project architect.
So we've got really the development team, the construction side, architectural side. I just stepped into this after the unfortunate situation here, but I'm connected with Dynamic Homes, my company, How Chunk Incorporated. We're a wholly owned tribal corporation based in Winnebago, Nebraska, and we have a lot of different subsidiaries, Dynamic being one of those. I'm CEO of the real estate development side of that entity. So we've got really just a deep amount of experience within our corporate umbrella that I lead, that will be plugging into this project. We've done everything from, gosh, two-hundred-acre mixed-use master planned communities that literally we took from cornfield to communities, right? With vibrant stores, apartment complexes, mixed-use buildings. We've got a single-family home company. We do a lot, just a lot of development, to the point of probably, I don't know, three-hundred million dollars in the last ten years, plus or minus, with about a half billion under construction right now of different various projects. So I really wanted to just emphasize, there's been a little bit of a change, obviously, due to that situation, but our team is completely qualified, competent, and have done lots of different projects and this would be right in our wheelhouse. So nothing would change from that, that standpoint. So I just wanted to reiterate that today and really emphasize also just a couple other pieces of the TIF process. Obviously, they had looked at the returns and one of my first things when I stepped into the returns was to look at that myself personally and educate myself on the financial structure of this project. And I would emphasize this absolutely would be necessary to make this project viable. These numbers have got some assumptions baked in here, too. As everybody knows, there's a national crisis from a labor standpoint and that's where we're using technology with Dynamic Homes that gives us the ability to do a lot of things in that factory and set these things on site. Still has a lot of labor on site, but it leverages a current technology with the modular home process or the modular construction process. And then the other big thing, too, with, obviously, it's no secret, construction material costs are drastically high. That wasn't part of what was mentioned, but to, to do a project like this today, the costs are higher and it does take some subsidiary, subsidized monetary kind of mechanisms like TIF to make this a reality. That wasn't really part of, I think, the basis to what you were shown, but that's just one of the economic things to kind of keep in mind in the background as well, too. One other just minor point of clarification, I don't know how recently, but it, the project was adapted slightly from eighty-eight units to eighty-five. So the twenty percent would be seventeen units technically that would fall under that twenty percent. That was a point of clarification, just in the last couple of weeks, I think that happened. I just want to make sure that was clarified to the group here today, too. So that's kind of my quick spiel, but I, we've got our team here, ready to answer any other questions that would come up as well, too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Before the council opens the public hearing, I would like to inform the council that I did receive ten emails today, so all of them have been forwarded to the city council. Couple of them had specific questions. If you are interested in me reading them verbatim into the record or just referencing generally during the public hearing, I can do that.
If you can read them into the record, that'd be great.
Read them verbatim?
Yeah.
Sure.
Does anyone have questions on anything that was presented before we move any further?
Okay. Do you want to wait till the public hearing is open before you do that? All right. Before I formally open the public hearing, there's a lot of loss here tonight. I'm just going to ask, when you approach the podium to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Please try not to repeat points that have been already brought up. And if you can just keep your time, I mean, don't go on for ten minutes. If you just have, you know, two or three minutes would be great, so. With that, we'll open the public hearing at six-thirty-seven. And Renee?
I'm going to have Haley read the-
Sure.
All righty. So the first email that was received was from Jason Hauercamp at five-zero-four Saxon Drive in Elko New Market. If the project can't stand on its own merit financially, why should we as a city subsidize it? And then he quotes from the Lincoln Institute. In theory, TIF generates new property tax revenue by spurring development that would not otherwise occur, which results in a larger tax base. The tool can help build trust and provide for a mutual commitment between local government and developers, and it can facilitate political support for investments by stipulating the taxpayers outside the TIF district will not have to contribute. However, TIF is prone to several pitfalls. In practice, TIF often captures some revenues that would have been generated through normal appreciation of property values, even without the TIF-funded investment. This over capture of revenue diverts resources away from public services citywide. Cities also sometimes exploit TIF to obtain revenues that would otherwise go to overlaying government entities such as school districts. In addition, TIF can make cities, can make cities' financial decisions less transparent by separating them from the normal budget process. In Chicago, for example, six-hundred-and-sixty million, nearly a third of the city's property taxes, go to TIF districts, making public scrutiny of these funds more difficult and preventing elected officials from reprioritizing the spending. Finally, TIF carries the same risks as other types of business tax incentives, which can lead to inner-city competition and short-term decision-making. The next one was submitted by Jennifer Wright at three-two-zero-three Aaron Drive. Good afternoon. I am unable to attend the meeting tonight in person. However, I would like to voice my concerns and state that I am against the TIF tax. I strongly believe we need to focus on current issues prior to adding more, specifically schooling and education. I don't believe there is a need for this apartment building in Elko at this time. When our schools, extracurriculars, transportation, et cetera, are able to keep up with current demands, then would be a good time to discuss adding this complex. Thank you for your service to our community. You are appreciated.
The next comment is from Chris Johnson at nine-one-five-eight Cambridge Lane. Hello. Has the city performed any stress-testing scenarios to determine viability of the development in an adverse economic or rental environment? Given the developers' reliance on TIF to make the project viable, an economic downturn or other unforeseen circumstance could bankrupt the project or require further concessions from the community. TIF mandates renter-income demographics which would most adversely impact, be impacted in adverse scenarios. Also, current federal legislation being proposed is seeking a per-mile-driven-vehicle tax, which would increase the cost of living in a rural area such as Elko New Market. Without available jobs nearby, it is likely that could make renting the units more difficult. I believe TIF could be better utilized to support business development as it is stated, primary purpose of TIF. Jobs created as a result could support such a housing development in the future and provide a more stable tax base. Adverse scenarios should be assessed and plans put in place to mitigate the risk of future concessions or other burdens being placed on current residents. Fifteen years is a long time. Thank you for your time. The next comment was submitted by Mark Booth and no address was provided. To whom it may concern, I realize that Elko is lacking in affordable housing and this is the driving factor in the proposed project. I do, however, there is a timing issue with this project. We have had an extraordinarily strong real estate market over the past few years. Looking at some of the projections that Eller has used, numbers look great. However, a market correction is extremely possible in the near future. If we do see a market correction, and now you are raising taxes on a typical Elko New Market family, I think you are doing a disservice to the community. Also, if the market is down and we see a flood of people starting to not work from home, although I see the work-from-home model slowing more in late 2023, filling the rental units thirty minutes from Minneapolis will be difficult. In my fifteen years of practice, I have never seen such a strong consensus that volatility, both foreign and domestic, will be picking up considerably. Geopolitical concerns in China, specifically when this project would start over the next two to six months. I really do not think this is the time to be doing this project. Outside of the volatility, we have inflation concerns, supply chain issues, and a lack of people working. Not saying I am for or against this project overall, but the timing couldn't be worse. This comment is submitted by Kim Anderson, and again, there is no address provided. Hello. I am unable to make the meeting today, but wanted to let you know that I strongly disagree with using city tax dollars to fund this project. If the project is to go forward, which I hope it doesn't, it should be fully funded by the company who is building it, who will manage it, and who will make the profit off the rent from it. I understand there will be a tax dollar return to our city, but honestly, there are many more options to receive tax dollars, many of which would be more beneficial to our city. I live on James Parkway and have already had to pay for repairs to the road once. Traffic from apartments will only cause this to happen again. Not to mention increased traffic so close to our elementary school is a safety concern. I'm all for city growth and building apartments, but not when it costs me more money personally, when I won't be living there, and puts my children and neighbor kids at risk when playing outside. There are not other areas these apartments could be built or other builders willing to finance their own projects. Please think long and hard about the long-term effects this will have on our community. I and many others think this is a horrible decision. This comment was submitted by Kevin Holst, whose address is one-zero-zero-six-five Ponsway. A couple questions slash comments maybe you could address at the meeting tonight, please. Due to scheduling conflicts, I could not make it to the meeting. On behalf of the greater majority of the Windrose neighborhood and specifically Ponsway, we strongly disapprove of the proposal of Blackstone. The amount of communication to residents during this process is a complete embarrassment on your part. Facebook should not be the main source of sending information to the residents, especially when the issue could have, have lasting effects like this one. You have to dig pretty far on your website to find the information in regards to the Blackstone proposal. Moving forward, you might want to rethink how you get important information to your residents. Is it available to find out how members of the council, as elected city officials, voted for the plat application and special use permit? Or would the city council members and Joe like to disclose yea or nay on moving forward with this? The voters would like to know. In July of 2012, TIF was adopted and put into place as the city's primary development priority is to encourage high-value commercial development, including but not limited to manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, office, and retail uses. Senior residential and other multifamily housing proposals may be considered for assistance on a case-by-case basis. So when "it" being the policy says case-by-case basis, does that mean that we will let someone develop without the correct amount of capital? Then we help them out financially and let them build all with special permits because they don't want to follow any of our code regulations, height, exterior finishes, parking, or easement regulations? In the previous meeting minutes, it was stated that Blackstone and the developer was looking for support from the community. Could we vote on this issue? From what I have heard, the overwhelming response is that no one approves of this development or the process by the city. There is some feeling that the council members and mayor that were elected to represent the people may be more interested in helping themselves and their personal businesses. Could anyone explain how we use TIF for this without a negative effect? We borrow tax dollars for housing and don't regain any back? It doesn't seem like there is any gain for the residents, especially when the majority don't want to see multifamily homes under Minnesota statute, low-income or workforce housing. This is a blue-collar working community. As stated earlier in the year in the Elko New Market newsletter, the safest community in Minnesota. Let's try to keep it that way. Maybe we can focus on building more neighborhoods and developing some high-value commercial as stated when approving the TIF program, because Blackstone Estates doesn't fall into any of these categories. Thank you. This comment was submitted by Phil and Amy Englund at two-seven-four-one-five John Quill Avenue. We would like to express our opposition to the TIF funding for the proposed apartment complex. The need for that type of housing in our area is not supported. One source cites this about TIF funding. Every time a city approves a TIF, they have to ask themselves a series of unknowable questions. Will the TIF perform well, create a flourishing area with tax-paying businesses and residents where one would not have otherwise existed? Or will it perform poorly, creating a huge loss of tax revenue? Elko New Market does not have businesses to support this influx of people. Our schools are already at capacity and our police department is not staffed to support the influx as well. All of those mentioned above would require even more tax hikes above what would already be implemented for the TIF funding. The ones that truly profit from this type of project are the ones developing the land and complex, further making the rich richer. If the investor can prove the need for this type of housing, then he should have no problem getting funded himself without taxpayer money. This next comment was submitted by Jenny Kahler, and there is no address provided. Hello. I am writing today to express my concerns with a proposed apartment building development off James Parkway. I am definitely against this project if it means my family's taxes are going to increase to help fund it. If this builder wants to build in this community and the community thinks it is what's best for our town, then I'm all for it. However, the builder should be the one to pay for the building and all the costs associated with this project. Thank you for your time and consideration. This comment was submitted by Joshua Youngmark at one-zero-three James Parkway. The city needs to review the long-term effects of not collecting taxed revenues. Elko New Market is founded on people that work hard for what they earn and have great values. The apartments will create minimal income to the city and only increase the use of city resources. I also reviewed the impacts to the city and disagree allowing eighty-eight more families to live on a street that is already overused due to the school is not ideal. It creates a safety concern with limited access to the area and increased traffic. This will cause an increased demand to city public safety and city works. I don't see any infrastructure improvements budgeted and with a TIF, the proposed apartments would not be contributing to these improvements. I, along with many other residents, don't agree with accepting a TIF for this project. The return on investment is not there. The builders need to be responsible for the improvements required to support an apartment complex in this area. And then the last comment was submitted by Megan Anderson, and there is no address provided. Hello. I just want to write and give my support for the new apartment building being proposed by Firehouse and for the TIF associated. I know many people are upset about increased population or about lower-income people coming, but frankly, it is necessary to get some affordable living in our area. I have a son that has neurological differences and it is very likely that when he becomes an adult, he will need to stay close to home while also living independently. Apartments like this give a place for people like him to live while living on a lower income. It also provides places- It also provides places for single parents, retirees, people who, for whatever reason, find themselves in a situation of lower income. They need housing too, and we should not be the type of town that tells them they are not welcome here, or that we assume just because they have less money, they will be criminals. We want to have more amenities in Elko New Market, but businesses won't develop here until we get more residents. This is how we do it. When we increase our population, we are able to get another gas station or a small grocery store, et cetera. This is what we need here so we can stop driving to other towns and giving them our money and keep it local instead. I know there are people online seemingly rallying a large opposition, so I wanted to show my support for this and let you know that not everyone agrees with them.
Thank you. All right, with that, who wants to speak first?
Quick question, Mr. Mayor. So, in the emails that we received and made tonight, you had questions at the podium. What would be your intent with regards to handling them? Do you want to handle them as they come, or do you want to answer them at the end?
I think it's best to try and handle them as they come, otherwise, there might be a long list.
Okay. There were three clear, distinct questions out of the emails that were neither answered by the presentation or non-ritorical in nature. Do you want to address those now or at the end?
No, let's let the folks here speak first. So who wants... Well, first, show of hands, who's all here to speak? All right. Who wants to go first?
My name is John Sheeran, Francis Avenue, 1003. I'm not opposed to the complex. That's not an issue. It's me getting taxed for it. When I look at this community, you people, I'm sure you're very nice people, but I also think of Washington DC and how much I have to deal with what's happening with inflation, with the $3.5 trillion deal that they want to make, and how much I'm going to have to pay for that, because nothing is zero. Okay? What I also think that's unfair is if you're going to use this TIF, why isn't Elko, as the city is called, Elko New Market, why isn't everybody taxed on it? Third, my wife and I were out driving around and we went through Lonsdale. Lonsdale doesn't have as many people to live here, but they have three gas stations and a grocery store. Okay? And the rent on this place is, what, $915 to $1,600? And the first thing this young lady said here was that this will help create jobs. Well, you got to have a job before you get into the apartment. And my last thing, I would like everybody behind me, raise their hand if they're against the TIF. Thank you very much.
Thank you. He literally just did what I was going to do. I mean, I don't want to repeat all the points, but...
Sure.
Fair enough.
Anyone else care to speak? Go ahead.
Mayor, I thought it might just be helpful to reiterate that with tax current financing, you're only capturing the incremental new taxes that are created by putting up this building on this one parcel and using a portion of that to reimburse the developer for certain eligible costs. So it's not imposing new taxes in and of itself on anyone else in the community for the tax mechanism itself. It's really just capturing that parcels' increase in growth and the taxes from that per the terms of this agreement and all the other requirements that you're putting on the provision of this tax increment assistance.
Bruce?
I think was the... I think the point you were trying to make, sir, was it... I forgot your name.
My name, John. Restaurant has one.
Was the point you were trying to make, the increased services that would be generated from this?
Well, what I'm trying to say is that, let me say this. Let me say it like this. If you're going to tax me...
Sorry.
Oh, okay. I'll come back up. I got to get my steps in anyhow. Thank you. You should see my Metallica on. What I'm trying to say is that everybody in this... You know, we came out here almost twenty years ago. We've lived here. And now you're telling me that the developer doesn't have enough dough to build this thing on his own, so he has to get money from me and everybody here. And that doesn't fly with me. So when I decide, I'm retired, but if I decide to open a business, should I ask everybody here for money to open up a gas station or something like that? That's not what I do. I take the full brunt and responsibility of what I build or what business I run, it comes out of my wallet. I ran restaurants for forty years. I didn't ask. I got my income from the people that came and ate at my restaurant, as they should, with the people that come and live there. And that's all that...
So it's a matter of principle?
Really, yeah, basically. I shouldn't have to, you know, I shouldn't have to pay for my next-door neighbors, whatever they're going to do. So I shouldn't have to pay for this. And a raise of hands shows that nobody else wants to either. And I know you like my shirt.
Tom, did you...
Well, Bruce was at the podium, I was going to ask if Bruce could talk about pay-as-you-go tax increment as opposed to a geo...
I don't know if we need to go super far.
I won't go super far, but maybe just to clarify really quick. I think it is important to note that the developer will be providing all of the capital necessary to construct the project. So both the debt financing and the equity financing totaling the total development costs will come from the development team and whatever bank they work with. What you're doing here is just using that incremental new tax from this development to pay them back on a pay-as-you-go basis, as it's called, for reimbursement. And so if the project doesn't generate enough tax increment to fully repay that eligible basis, by the end of the term, it's just done. The city doesn't owe anything. In addition, you don't owe anything along the way if the taxes are less than projected. It's just they get it on a pay-as-you-go basis. Then on the flip side, if it generates more taxes because it's valued higher, or tax rates go up, or whatever the case might be, then you pay that note off faster and then it's done instead of in fourteen years, maybe in twelve or eleven years. So hopefully that was short enough. Thanks.
All right, who wants to go next?
I'm Rob Schnickels, I'm 26681 Oakridge Way in Elko. Just from that, I think a lot of us might share the same sentiment, but we came out to this community because of what it had to offer and what it didn't offer, some being multi-unit housing and that sort of thing. And, you know, for selfish reasons, I really like the community and what it offers. So far, you know, most of the... Most of the self of this project is the financial gain for it, for the city and the residents. I don't know that we're financially desperate for money or for an increase in tax base. I think the community does pretty well as a whole right now, and maybe it's just a little early for a project like this that can't pay for itself. So I pause it.
Thank you.
Jeremy Brown, 55, Dakota Avenue. I guess I just got a couple of things. I mean, first and foremost, I'm really hoping that this meeting is more not as just a procedural thing and you actually are listening to what we're saying. I watched a lot of your guys' faces as they were reading off those emails, and I saw some of the different facial expressions, and my concern is, is a lot of minds already made up. That's what my concern is. That would be very disappointing. You know, I grew up a small town, St. Peter, Minnesota, came up to the big city, met my wife up here. We moved to Elko New Market because it was close enough to the city and it was the only thing that reminded me of growing up on the farm in St. Peter. You know, I live on Dakota Avenue, right across from all these buildings that are seemingly rapidly going up now, and it sucks. I mean, selfishly, I hate looking out my window and looking at satellite dishes and air conditioners all over the place, and it's just getting worse. And, you know, I know that this, that part isn't a part of the meeting with the TIF situation, but, you know, I look at our Main Street and all the, what I would call crappy houses and really unflattering things for our town down Main. You know, our money could be used on a lot better things than this project, in my opinion. How about let's dress up our town? Let's make it, you know, I mean, just some of the stuff that, yeah, I mean, I could go on about that. Furthermore, I mean, I know bringing in more... Bringing in an apartment building like this, having more people, you know, the idea is, you know, hey, then our businesses will grow and maybe we'll have more businesses move in. But I've been hearing that literally every year since we've moved to this town, and I sit right across from a strip mall that has four vacant stores for how long now? We can't even get anybody to fill these, you know, the strip mall stores. They're vacant. It's just every day I go by them and look at them. I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit in this situation. You know, the last thing I want to touch on is patrolling this area. Our road is horrible, and I feel like it's just going to get worse. We let this, we... This project goes through, I mean, I cannot begin to tell you the traffic that goes down Dakota and then turns on James. My son walks down that street every day, or walks down the sidewalk, and in the winter, sometimes the street, because people don't like to shovel their sidewalks, but that's a whole nother story. I cannot begin to tell you how many times we've complained about the speeders coming off that street, coming in from the country, coming in from the gravel road, cruising down our street. I personally saw a four-wheeler doing a wheelie halfway down Dakota, lose control of it. He fell off and the four-wheeler smoked the light pole. So maybe be... I apologize. Maybe before we worry about this big eighty-eight or eighty-five unit building, let's work on that aspect of it. So again, we're not putting the cart before the horse on the situation, because then it's only going to get worse. My wife and I, I can't even tell you how many times I've complained about the speed of the vehicles going down that street. And then you're adding the traffic from this apartment building to go with it? I mean, something's got to happen. People are going to get hurt. Something is going to happen. And I, yeah, I just would hate to see it. Thank you.
I just wanted to address a couple of things. Everyone should... The emails that were read, we all received those emails prior, so it wasn't our first time hearing it. It just felt important to have them read into the record for the public comment, so... And I also want to just address, because I've heard a lot on social media and other places, why couldn't we use these funds somewhere else to improve our community? It's not how TIF works. We're not taking any money that we already have. TIF is really a property tax rebate in its simplest form. So I just wanted to clear up any misconceptions. Yeah. I thought you might be coming back up.
So, yeah, you're correct. It is not money we technically already have. I get that. I'm not stupid. I totally understand.
I wasn't suggesting...
No, 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 I know. I'm just... Your speech. But the thing is, is when our focus is going towards this project, and there is going to be more expense to come to this, this isn't as easy as to say, okay, we're going to approve this TIF, put up this building, and in fourteen years, we're going to be making all kinds of money or, you know, whatever. It doesn't go like that. You know, we're not adding in all the other things that are going to come forward to this situation that are going to cost us more money. So we're going to take this money like this, where we could be maybe putting it here, and all of a sudden, we're having to, you know, go like this because now we have this new really big expense. I mean, am I wrong?
No, I... I don't know that I want necessarily getting back and forth. I mean, there's a lot of unknowns, right?
Right.
I mean, which I think is kind of where you get, where you're coming from. Yeah.
Thank you.
And council members, feel free if you want to jump in. Who wants to go next?
Come on, there's a lot of you here. I know you all have opinions.
Can we talk about something? If it's just TIF, then we all voted. I voiced my opinion. We all raised our hand on the TIF. What do you want, opinions on the building itself? I'll have at it.
I mean, there was a public hearing that was held a while back for the project itself, but if you want, you are welcome to approach the podium and speak if you have any...
When?
Yeah, I'd like to hear a broach of... I'm sorry, what was your question?
Sorry. How do you get notified when the city council meetings are? Nobody...
Well, they're posted on our website.
So we have to go into the website in order to find out there's meetings?
If you wanted to see what the schedule for city council meetings, you have to go to the website. Otherwise, they are posted on the board.
I'm just saying, an important meeting like that, I found out one day before, otherwise I would have been at that one.
Understood.
Maybe it'd be helpful, Mr. Mayor, for reading the kind of over how we do public notices for meetings and ideas that are on meetings?
Sure.
Et cetera. What we do, the minimums that we do to meet legal requirements, and what we do to go beyond that.
Sure.
So... Public hearings for development-related projects typically occur at the planning commission. They're a board of five people that are appointed by the city council. They hear the request, take public testimony, and make recommendations to the city council. The city council makes the final decision. Under state law, state statute requires that a development project proposed, that we send notices to every property owner within three hundred and fifty feet. You get a mailed notice to your house if you are within three hundred and fifty feet of a development project.
We have to publish it by law in the local newspaper. In addition, we typically put on the city's Facebook page, usually pretty quickly get shared to neighborhood pages, like this hearing today. And then all materials are posted on the city's website and the planning commissioner and city council. That's just typical.
I recommend a change on that. When you're developing, developing in a field, who's in three hundred and fifty feet of that?
I'm sorry, but to keep everything on the record, you have to... I'm sorry. I apologize. But your point was maybe we should relook at and do more to understand.
Who would like to speak next?
Come on up. Actually, could we just go through that email from Kevin Holst? I kind of talked to him about that. Kind of all these emails are kind of pushed off aside. I think there's some good points there that I would just say again. Here goes. Has some pretty good value.
He is the one that had a few questions. Anything else you want to address those?
Yeah, I can just address the questions that Kevin had submitted. The first one was, is it available to find out how members of the council, as elected city officials, voted for the plat application and special use permit? Or would the council members and Joe like to disclose yea or nay on moving forward with this?
So I think that we just have to check the meeting, or the meeting minutes for... I can't remember which meeting specifically that was.
So I can take time during the meeting to go look it up. Otherwise, if Mr. Holst would like to know, the meeting minutes are posted online and that... And if you want to hang around for a minute after the meeting, I'll get you the date or even look it up for you for him. But the meeting minutes are posted online. You'll be able to see the a's and m's in the actual meeting minutes.
And as far as voting on TIF, when we do vote on it, yeah, we'll likely do a rule call vote, so you'll be able to see who's all voting and what.
And then there was a quotation that was pulled directly from our business subsidy policy referencing senior residential and multifamily housing may be considered for assistance on a case-by-case basis. And Kevin asked, so when it says case-by-case basis, does that mean that we will let someone develop without the correct amount of capital? Then we will help them out financially and let them build with all special permits because they don't want to follow any of our city code regulations?
I would disagree that we would, that it's that light of a process. Renee, how long has this been? Has this project been going on for?
Almost three years.
Almost three years.
And there was a reference that in that particular...
And there was a reference that, in that particular email, I think you stated, Haley, that the developer is meeting our parking requirements and design requirements and landscaping requirements. So the only deviation from the city requirement was an increase in building height by about eight feet.
And then the last question was just, could anyone explain how we use TIF for this without a negative effect?
Well, uh.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think the idea behind using TIF for this is to bring in more residents. We'll have eighty-eight more or eighty-five more affordable places to live in our community. As many of you know, we've been working on trying to develop an industrial park for quite some time. One of the largest concerns that we hear is where are our workers going to live? I think if we were to move forward with, with this project and if they, if we were to use TIF to help with the financing of it, the idea is it's going to help address some of those concerns that major developers have looked at. So then there's others, but that's the big one in my book, is how, what we'd be investing in. Anything to add?
Haley, I think there was a question in there of whether or not the city had conducted a stress test related to the project. Maybe Bruce can respond, respond to that.
That was an earlier email.
This was Chris Johnson and they asked, has the city performed any stress testing scenarios to determine viability of a development in, in an adverse economic or rental environment?
Mr. Mayor and council, we do a lot of housing analysis on behalf of our city clients. And I should note that LRS only works for the public sector. We're not developers. We don't work for any developers in any way, shape or form. So all of our analysis is to benefit our public sector clients. And with the level of affordability with this project, not only the seventeen units that will be required to be at affordable, but also the other units being in that band of relative affordability, that will really make this project largely recession-proof in our eyes because the, the units that go for the, have the greatest demand for them are the ones that are relatively affordable as opposed to the luxury apartments that are getting built in, you know, Lakeville, Burnsville, or Burnsville just go up the road to the Twin Cities, right? So we, we really think that although of course, you know, we can't predict the future and what might happen, this project would be positioned to do comparatively well, even in a recession or something worse were to hit because it's poised to, to stay afford, relatively affordable compared to other options. And I would also point again that the city isn't loaning any money to this project. All you're doing is rebating taxes, right? The developer will provide a hundred percent of the financing and the equity that will be required. As to the stress test, Tom, let me just touch on that briefly. If there is somehow a calamitous impact on the housing market and there is a huge increase in vacancy, or if for some reason the developer has to slash rents, and we don't foresee that given where it's, where it sits relative to the rest of the rental housing market, but if that were to happen, or if they were to have a huge increase in operating costs, right, that's the other thing that could happen, the developer would be faced with taking less of a return on investment. That's what would happen. It's, it's not that the project would go bankrupt and I'm sure that the developer would do everything they could to avoid having to go into foreclosure because they have millions of dollars in equity in this project. And if they go into foreclosure, then they lose that equity. So I guess that would be my response to the idea of adverse economic conditions.
Thank you. Who else would like to? Welcome back.
TIF, well, here's what I want to ask. No one has talked about, everybody's talking about we're going to get taxed if this is approved, but nobody has talked about, is that the eleven percent everybody's going to get taxed? Or what, what is the percentage that everybody will get taxed?
Zero.
Huh?
But that's what I was trying to.
See, it's sounding like, more like Washington.
Like I said, well, as I, as I said earlier, think of it as like a property tax rebate. We don't give them, we don't give the developer any money. We as a city don't give the developer any money. They just get a discount on the increased value of their property for a period of time.
So essentially what happens is they pay their taxes and the taxes, ninety percent of the taxes that they pay.
Go back to them.
Go back to them.
Right.
Has there any, has, has, has the city council, has anybody here background checks referring to bankruptcies or mortgage fail, failure to pay mortgages off the properties?
Yes, we, we have vetted the investors in the project and I'll let Bruce and Renee speak to what that entail.
And, and will that particular, uh, how can I word this?
Are you speaking of the developer defaulting on their mortgage potentially with the bank?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understand.
Right. My question is, is he going to be the project, the building manager too? Is he employed still by them?
When you say he?
Or she, or whoever it is that defaulted?
So let's address an elephant in the room here. There is, I saw it going around on social media, there is someone that was part of the development team, well, there's part of the investor group, I should say, that did serve time in prison. I believe they served time in prison for a mortgage scam.
I think they were just convicted.
I thought they served.
No, actually, there's no, but it's an investor group. His son that has, their son, their son is once, he is not part of the investor.
That, and that individual's been removed from the investor, but that's whichever.
But is it under the, I, I'm under the assumption, and I could be wrong, but I, that he, that, that son or whoever he is would be actually running.
No, no. No, it'd be a separate management company that would be actually managing the project itself. The individual that we're discussing here was purely an investor. And background, they had purchased the land years ago with the intent of turning it into a apartment complex, which it's zoned for, which is fine. This is just a different wrinkle to that with the TIF application. Can I?
I, I just wanted to discuss really briefly, Mr. Mayor and council, that we did look at financial records for both the development group and the investors. And you clarified that, that specific individual is in no way affiliated with this project, either as part of the development team or an investor or project management. And we're satisfied, again, as your fiduciaries and your representatives, that the folks involved going forward have both the financial capacity and the organizational capacity to make this work as proposed. It was certainly very sad to lose the main representative that we had been working with, but it's clear that he had a deep bench behind him and we don't see any reason to raise a, a red flag about their ability to get this project done and to operate it successfully.
Does anyone else care to speak? All right. Welcome.
Uh, my name is Lisa Wonstead. Address is two five eight eight one Idaho Avenue. My question is just, and I, forgive me if this has been asked and answered, but if there is a higher demand on the resources, police, fire, school, what is the plan for where that money is going to come from?
That's where the raising taxes piece comes in.
Okay. Raising taxes on everyone? Is that what we're being?
I'm just saying that, that's where that, the concern about raising taxes kind of comes.
Sure, that's, and that's kind of what the question, so is that, would that be the plan if there is an increase in those needs that the taxes would be raised to the community?
I mean, if there's an increase on services that were, that's beyond what we would anticipate, yeah, we'd have to increase revenues in one way, form of, or one way or another to, to pay for that cost, whether that's hiring more police officers or whatever it might be. So, yeah, I mean, that is a, that is a real thing that we have to take into account when we're making this decision.
Mr. Mayor, if I may maybe address that topic since it's very, very prominent tonight? So that's a very legitimate question to ask about whether or not, when you're providing public subsidy to a project, even if it's TIF, even if though it doesn't, you're not funneling taxes from someplace else to go into a project, is it by its nature type going to create additional demands on other services and thereby do put pressure on your existing taxpayers? So as part of our TIF plan, we do take a look at it. So if we look at this particular project, what are the areas where it could potentially put pressure on your taxes? Is it creating new public infrastructure that you need to maintain? Roads, water, those types of things? Does it create an additional demand on the city from an administration standpoint? Things we have to do up at city hall because this project now exists and takes bandwidth, takes a bandwidth? Or does it place a demand on other public services such as public works or public safety, police and fire? So if we look at the utility side, water, sewer, streets, infrastructure, there's no new public infrastructure that's being built as part of this project. All the infrastructure that's being built is all private infrastructure and it's all the responsibility of the developer to maintain as part of their property, just as everything within your property boundaries is yours to maintain or any business. So there is no additional demand from a utility standpoint. I should note, as, as Renee pointed out in the presentation, however, this project will provide substantial revenues into our utility funds, which will assist with the health of those funds, helping provide some insurance against growth in rates and help, and they will help pay for things like water towers and water treatment plants and those types of things. From a public work standpoint, since there's no new roads and there's no, no new additional sewer and water being created, there's really no additional demand on public works, except there might be a hydrant on site that gets flushed once a year or something like that. I mean, it's very minimal, if at all, that there would be an additional demand on public works. From a public safety standpoint, again, going to the elephant in the room that, well, this is an affordable project and it's those apartment people and it's going to create additional demands on public safety. We can sit here and we can, there can be a debate in the room about whether or not that would actually occur, but the reality is for this one project to increase additional demand on the property taxpayer from a law enforcement standpoint, you would have to have from that one project enough calls coming in from that one project to demand hiring an additional police officer on any given shift to be able to respond to those demands. Currently, that is incredibly, incredibly unlikely that a single project, especially of this size and magnitude, would have the capacity to do that. Additionally, as was mentioned in the presentation, we have written into our development agreements in our TIF contract, the carrot and the stick. And the stick is that if you don't manage your project well, and we have a lot of police calls to that project, you either have to evict people and in the worst case, we can actually withdraw the subsidy from the project. And so there's a large financial incentive on the part of the project owner to make sure that the project is well managed because you're talking hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars over the course of the project if that subsidy were to go away. So at this point, it's not the assessment and the analysis that's been by staff and presented to the council that there's going to be a significant increase or even a notable increase on city services, but it's an excellent question to ask and it's definitely something that the council has to consider when they are looking at possibly providing the subsidy.
Thanks, Tom. Who, who wants to go next?
I know there were hands raised in the room as far as who's opposed, but really approaching the, the podium to express if you're for or against the project, this is your, your, the TIF, this is your chance. So please come up and.
I'm Reggie. I live with Lisa. I'm opposed to the TIF taxing anybody right now, increasing whoever tax comes from is a bad look in 2021 when everything sucks financially. End of rant.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Alicia Kneefel. I live at three one seven nine Iron Drive. I guess my question that I had is like, right now I like to drive my kids to school on the golf cart and we like to, you know, get there safely. But my question is, is like, if we have like eighty-five to let's say three hundred new people coming in, like the safety of the road, are we going to no longer be able to drive to school with our golf cart? And right now is really not a great time to be a police officer. I don't really hear a lot of my police officer friends knocking down the doors to be a police officer. So I wonder like, if we have these eighty-five to three hundred new people, you know, do you have the availability right now to hire more people and what's that going to cost us as a community to hire more police officers? Also, I'm concerned like, you know, let's say we have the eviction thing where you get, you know, two strikes, you're out on the third, but then what happens if we're still in COVID? You know, we're still going to have to let these people stay here until they can get through. And like right now, if we do affordable housing, let's say with that twenty percent, those people are probably not likely going to be new business owners to fill our mini mall. So I just am concerned like, you know, maybe if it was for elderly veterans, something like that, I could see maybe doing that, but to add another possibly three hundred people, I'm worried about safety. And our school, we just don't even have room in our school right now. So then I worry like, we get these three hundred people here, but then what are we going to tell them if they come with kids? Sorry, you're on a waitlist. Then they're still having to drive somewhere else to bring their kids. So that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to address the public safety?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I just didn't want to jump in if it wasn't appropriate. Just going to go with that.
Okay.
As far as the eighty-eight units or eighty-five, excuse me, uh, mentioned before, we should do more residential development. If we put in eighty-five homes and people move in there, statistically, we're going to have the same amount of people, two point five people per apartment. These apartments might not even bring in that many people. With an apartment, there is built-ins with the property management company that you have a three strikes. Like any apartment, you can actually remove a problem resident with a house you can't. We all know that there's houses in our community that generate a lot of calls. We can't force them to move. We can't get them out. We can't do any, we don't have any control with the rental housing through the processes that we have. We have some control and some action we can take to make that a safer property. As far as traffic, if you build a eighty-five unit residential complex, you're actually probably going to have more cars because every home has two to three cars. If they have teenage kids, there's five or six cars at some of these homes. So I think you're going to see a lot more of the problems with any development. And what we've assessed, when we looked at this, and we did look at it, we already have a certain number of police officers. This project at only eighty-eight units is not going to need a whole new officer. We're going to be able to absorb it into our time and constraints that we have now. So that's why we put that we didn't see a significant cost to us. We already have officers working. Are, are they going to have to go there? You bet. People have medicals. But that's the same with the eighty-five homes. You're going to go there because a neighbor's dog bit another dog. You're going to go there because a, a house got, a car got broken into. Every residence that we bring in has a certain level of demand. We don't see this apartment complex generating significantly more than any eighty-five homes that we bring in. And so that's why we put in the assessment that we don't think it's going to be a financial drain on our department. We think we're going to be able to absorb the units into our current numbers. Now, as we grow, are we going to need more officers? You bet. But it's not going to be just because of this one apartment complex. And that's why we made the assessment we did. When I met with Todd, the fire department, same assessment, eighty-five homes, you're going to have elderly people that might need medicals. You're, you might have residential fires. You might have demands on that, but we didn't see it as a significant public safety drain, if you will, just to address that.
What do we do about the schools, though?
I don't work for the schools. I can't address that.
Fair question because we're, I'm on the committee for, you know, Elko for, because I have preschoolers, but like right now, there's like three kids on the waitlist and they're an Elko New Market resident. They're not a Lakeville resident. They're Elko. So they're not even open enrolling. So my question is, is how do we add, let's say, even eighty, eighty kids minimum, how do we add another eighty kids to an already waitlisted school of their own residents?
So we can't answer that question because we're not the school district, but to stay on the same thing as the chief of police, the same would be true whether or not we added eighty-eight single-family homes to the community or eighty-eight twin homes to the community or any other type of housing that's additional students. So the question of sufficient capacity in the school district.
If you're adding homes though, most of the majority of the homes are being built way over by Pete's Hill. That's still the Lakeville School District right now. So they're building the schools over there. They're moving their students there. They still have the capacity to grow with Lakeville and they're building new schools. We don't. We can't even go up or down or sideways.
I'll, I'll address your question. I see, we don't know. We, we, there's really, we don't have.
We, we, there's really, we don't have an answer. We would, I mean, that's, that's a question we would need to bring to the superintendent of New Prague Schools. What's your plan? We're going to be, are you looking to build another facility? Are you looking to realign your, you know? That, that would be a question that we would look to ask them, but you know, I, I can't, I don't think any of us can tell you we have that exact answer. It's a fair concern, but...
Can I add one thing or a question? Dave, obviously known this project's out there too. Have they addressed that concern with anybody now that they're taking it out?
Do you want to add, Mr. Muir, on this school point? I think it's a great question about capacity and a concern about capacity. But I think it's worth noting that given the unit mix in this 85-unit apartment complex, I think it's highly unlikely that you would have 80 kids. Probably not even a fraction of that in terms of living in this, these apartments. In addition, the vast majority of school funding, and this is, I don't advise school districts, but I work with a lot of people who do. The vast majority of school funding comes from per pupil capita funding from the state. It doesn't come from property taxes. So it's a clearly an issue that New Prague Schools will have to figure out how to house more students in a growing district. But it's not something that would be exacerbated significantly in any way, shape or form by the TIF situation.
Thank you. One, one other point that I wanted to get back to for the chief. Your opinion, we have, you know, 300 more residents right in that apartment complex and the traffic piece has been brought up a number of times. How concerned are you about that? About enforcing traffic, making sure it runs smoothly?
Well, if again, when you build 88 homes in a, in a residence, bluff point, there's one entrance coming in and out. So is it going to have an impact? Of course, there's more cars. As earlier Dakota, we're on there, you might not see us, but we're there.
You can sit in our driveway and that's all you want.
And we monitor and we, and we really do do our best, but it's, it's, Elko New Market's no different than any other community. We have one or two officers working. We cannot be everywhere. We do our best. We try. You see us out there. But there are going to be cars turning on there. But there's townhomes being built there. Those also add onto it. And when you have this many units, people living in rental, working different shifts, they're not all going to be coming out at the same time. I do not see a significant public safety hazard. We don't have one now there, driving the golf cart. We have a beautiful wide sidewalk. As most of you, if you have kids, I'm there every morning, just about, or one of my staff. And we just don't see a significant problem there. We don't have crashes there very often. And if they do, it's not school this, it's not school related. It gets busy for half an hour, 45 minutes in the morning, half an hour, 45 minutes when school lets out and there is a demand there. We try, we're up there and we do everything we can.
I think that's a violation to drive on the sidewalks though in the, for the golf carts. It's a violation to drive on the sidewalks.
Uh, your golf cart?
Yes.
Okay.
Drive a motorized vehicle with a battery on it. How am I supposed to drive my kids safely there unless you want to let me use the sidewalk?
So no, you can, I don't have you, you've never been hit, you've never had a problem driving your kids there before, right? Because I, I sit there every morning. I don't see it, you, every morning. What time do you go?
I'm there at eight o'clock every morning.
Oh, okay. That's early. Is that preschool?
Yes.
Okay. So there's not a lot of traffic then though either because it's preschool, it's before school comes in and out. I was referring to huge sidewalk, bikers, walkers. I see probably 10 kids ride their bikes every day to school. So I meant public safety wise, there is options for that. You're right, you can't drive your golf cart on there, but kids can walk on there, kids can bike, people walk on their dogs. It is, it has good infrastructure for the pedestrian traffic, bike, golf carts. You're taking your life and your risk anytime you're driving that in the roadway anyways or your ATVs. But it's, it's, it's relatively safe. It's not curvy. There's not blind spots. It's good visibility coming in and out. It, it doesn't have a lot of contributing factors that I see. And we, Renee will tell you, fire department, myself, went over these plans that you saw. We tried to identify any public safety issues, the way traffic goes in and out. Fire hydrant placement. We made significant changes that the developer totally spent money on to make it a safer structure. Make it safer for fire trucks to access, to turn around. They, they've been working and addressing all of our issues. This wasn't just thrown on us. As a community and the council, we've been doing everything we can to make this a safe, great project. So that's why we haven't opposed it. That's why we didn't see a significant public safety cost to our department. We've tried.
Hi, I'm Rita Brown, 55 Dakota Avenue. First of all, you guys should, should hang out on Dakota around like the KidsCo drop off in the morning. Because oh, I guarantee it's really bad. But anyway. I am trying desperately to get back to this whole TIF thing and understand, nothing is as easy as, oh, you guys don't have to pay anything on taxes and they just get a discount. All right, let's say they don't get the discount. Where would their money be going if they didn't have that discount? How would those taxes be used? Because that's where it's getting, so obviously there's a certain amount that is the, the revenue that would be coming in from these apartments. Now you're saying that they get some kind of a tax discount is what this is about so that they don't have to pay somehow. It's not invisible money. Where would that money be going if it wasn't? Yeah. Yeah. Because obviously it's got to be not going somewhere.
Go ahead. Yeah, that's a fantastic question because the kid's at the heart of the butt core test. And you can have all sorts of opinions about, would this project as proposed, with the, with the mix of units and the affordability, would this happen but for TIF, right? Renee talked about that before. And it was our analysis and our opinion that you couldn't reasonably expect the developer to move forward with this project as proposed without TIF. So if you believe the analysis and the underlying assumptions, you would say there wouldn't be any new taxes because the project wouldn't happen. You'd be stuck or you'd still have the same property that you have there now and the city would continue to receive those taxes. It doesn't say that nothing could be built there, right? You could have some development at some period in time, whether it's one year from now or 10 years from now or whatever. It might be a different type of project. We're not saying that either. We're just saying with this project as proposed and with what it's providing to the community, whether you, however you feel about it, we don't think that the developer would achieve a reasonable return on investment to expect them to put in their millions of dollars of equity into this project without some level of assistance.
So in other words, to the question that you were getting at, where does the money come from, right? The money just wouldn't, it wouldn't be there. Because, you know, we all get our property tax statements and we all get happy when we see how much our property values went up and then get pissed when we see how much our taxes are going up. Well, they're just going to stay flat at, for 15 years or 14 years. It's 14, right?
Oh, with, I'm sorry. Well, the developer will actually be paying the full amount of taxes, right? It's not a rebate, but then they're net getting it, the reimbursement. But if, if you agree that without assistance it would happen, then the taxes would be what they are currently for the Carolina.
Yeah. Does that help?
Kind of.
Kind of.
Sort of.
Okay. Are there? Hey.
I have, I have one quick question. I have to think about this. Has the city council and the developer or any other developer discussed multiple buildings? Because if you go around the cities, you, you never see just one unit. They start popping up all over the place like popcorn. So has this council debated to put up another, if this one's successful, will you work with them again?
That's a good question and that's not one that we've looked at yet. What we know is the property is owned for, you know, a certain use. And as Renee pointed out earlier, they could come in and pull a permit for that use at any time. We don't really have anything saying that we can't say no. Now, maybe to your point, if they wanted to acquire more land and then look and apply for TIF again for another project, that's nothing that we've even had a conversation.
There's not been anything discussed about further growth in this rental on that particular lot?
Or anywhere else? No, I, I don't know that there'd be room for...
That was an ax to it first of all.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, to be clear though, we've had, we've been approached by other developers for housing, multifamily housing projects in the last couple of years. None of them have advanced to this point.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry if I misunderstood.
But with regards to Blackstone, this is the only property that we are aware of that they control and it's the only project that we've discussed with them and this project maxes out that property.
And Mr. Muir, I think it's just really important to point out quickly that, and Andrea will mention this, can mention this as well. Agreeing to provide TIF to this project in no way sets any kind of legal binding precedent for future decisions either on land use or on any kind of incentives. And I work with a lot of communities that provide incentive for one project and then say for whatever reason, specific to that next project, that we're not going to provide assistance or we might provide a much lesser level of assistance, probably not TIF in that case. So your, your hands are now in no way bound to do something similar for any future project.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else would like to speak? Welcome.
I'm Melissa Ten-Sullivan. I guess one thing for me would be back to the school. I would really like you guys to get input from New Prague on how they're going to handle it, even if it's not 80, even if it's 20 or 10. If she says there's a waitlist, okay, come on. So if they, if they have to do improvements to the school, it's going to come via a levy. And then we are paying for that.
Sure.
So I would really like you guys to get some input from them before you just blindly go into it.
Oh, we will.
My next question is, so you're saying they can afford to pay for this on their own, but it's not going to make enough money for them return of income or whatever, investment? So we are kind of helping. I, I guess I'm confused on that, like, okay, can you, at what time you, at one time you said this would work. Then everything happened. Now you can't afford it. So have they considered, I don't know, redrafting their plans, making it smaller? Making it something that would maybe work better? Question. Next one, you guys keep pointing out that the industrial park, you know, they say the employees, I don't know if 300 people are going to really affect that, but they also look at daytime employees. And we have what, maybe 600? So I think there's a lot more to it than just getting more houses or more heads population.
Yeah, I think something I probably should have said, I mean, there's really, there really is a lack of affordability in terms of housing in Elko New Market. I mean, there's, I, I don't know where you're going to live unless you're going to get a $300,000 to $400,000 mortgage. You know, I, I have a, Lakeville, right, but not within, not within our community. I have...
But there's places to live.
There are places to live, but I'm talking about kind of within our community. So that's another one of the reasons.
Awesome. But, um, so my other question then is, with this TIF now, are we still looking at the other TIF for the property by the roundabout?
No.
That's off, that's done now?
That's not an active project at this time.
Okay, so they're not using it anymore? All right.
Are you, sir?
Yeah, just to address, I think, I don't know if she phrased the question yet.
Thank you.
I think the question was had we considered alternatives? And I did want to express, the alternative would be worse than the fear that we have now, to be honest with you. I mean, I know we hear the term renters and we think, you know, I think we have to remind ourselves, most of us, I'm guessing, rented? And we're renters. I'm guessing most of you are not hardcore criminals and bad people too. So keep that in mind. Everybody was a renter at one point in time, including myself and, and not a criminal too, right? But there will be screening in place, background checks, et cetera, just from a fiduciary. You don't build an $18 million complex and then not put people that you think are qualified to pay, that are not going to cause major problems for you and things like that. And if they, if they still get through that screening process and they cause problems, we don't want them there either, right? So you're going to have a couple no matter what, if it's a single-family house or an apartment complex. We, we're going to have processes in places. But I just wanted to remind ourselves, we're probably all renters and that doesn't mean you're a bad person, right? And that this project was really intended to fill, I think, a need that was identified in the comprehensive planning process from the city from an affordable housing standpoint. So to answer that question, the alternative would be worse than the fear that we have now on, in a four, just having 17 units at a little bit of lower subsidized. It would be called a low-income tax credit project. And honestly, the project's entitled to build right now. To go through that process might take a year, but this project does truly need some sort of economic incentive. And that doesn't mean, you know, we get a check for $1.9 million of free money. The incentive is that rebate towards that taxes that the project is creating that do not exist today. But the alternative, I just wanted to say, would be low income. And that would be honestly a little bit scarier scenario, I think, just because it would be, all of the units would be low income. We didn't want to do that either. That's why we felt like this was probably the best win-win to fill a need for the city from an affordability standpoint, without going to the extreme of low-income housing. So I wanted to at least address that point. So thank you.
Good evening. Mark Berstrom, 255 James Parkway. I run the youth program, baseball, girls softball in town. Curious to know, is there any fields going to be built with this program?
Planning?
No.
No fields? So with, okay, so seriously, I run the program, guys. We got 275 kids in the program, one that's at full size. Clearly, there's not enough fields in this town. Okay? When are we going to get fields? I rent out the school, two fields, New Market Baseball has a lot of money invested in those two fields. I run them, I maintain them. Where are fields? How are we going to cross these county road two to get these kids over to our park? Where's the safety? There is not. I can't walk my dog down there. Belong to a church. My friends over here belong to another church. We can't have a softball game because there's no softball parks in this city. Where are they? When are we going to think about our kids? I've done it for 45 years in this town. The 90-foot baseball parks are not owned by the city. Elko owns it. New Market Baseball rents from the church. We provide a nice entertainment to the city. When are we going to get a softball park and more baseball parks for these kids? I got 275 kids in the program. Where? So aren't developers supposed to give us land? Is this a developer?
So the, anytime a developer develops, they...
An 18-step to the point?
Yes. Anytime a developer develops land, they are obligated to either provide land to the city or cash in lieu of land. So if it's a land dedication, it's 8% of the land in their development. The city, this development was presented to the city's Parks Department. And the Parks Department determined that taking a portion of the land within their site, you know, 8% of three acres wasn't something they wanted. They wanted the cash in lieu of land. So the developer will, if this project moves forward, would contribute $64,000 to the city's park fund.
Renee, what is the Parks Commission? What is the, who do they do with those funds?
They use the funds to develop parks or buy land.
Yeah, and your budget's $110,000 a year, as of three, four years ago, right?
For Parks Department?
For the Parks Department. Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Yep, it's somewhere's wrong. Okay, so where's the parks for the, the other townhomes that are being built?
So I think your concern is a fair concern. It's, we're adding people. We're not, we're not adding the parks.
not adding the parks to really...
I'm not for or against it.
Understood.
But we're gonna have kids.
Yeah.
So those kids are gonna come to our program, and there's no fields.
Yeah, it's a fair point.
You're over the top.
Yeah.
It's a fair point. Yeah, it's worth pointing out, we're not here to be able to provide concrete satisfactory answers to all the questions, okay? We're not voting on this tonight. We're not even necessarily discussing this tonight after the public hearing. That's, I think, tentatively planned for next week. Our role here is to hear things like that, hear the feedback that maybe we haven't necessarily heard yet, but this is, this is what it's all about. So if you're asking us questions and we're kind of giving you looks, it's not, you know, that we're trying to be rude, it's not that we're, we just may not necessarily have the answers to all the questions, and that's the whole point of this hearing. So thank you.
Who likes, come on up.
It's been a while.
Hey, ask.
Okay.
Just a couple more things, and then I'll be done, I promise. I know you rattled off a lot of things. This wasn't gonna, you know, no infrastructure needed, none of this, blah, 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 blah. I think we can all agree that that's in a perfect scenario, perfect world. I mean, I know that you look at it right now, and you can say, well, there's James Parkway there, there's, you know, no sewers needed, or new ex, or no extra stuff. But I mean, I'm just, we all know things aren't, aren't gonna go perfect. I mean, if they do go perfect, kudos on you. But it seems like a lot of the, you know, the verbiage up here is in that perfect world. We're just not there. I think we can mostly agree on that. I apologize if I miss, or if you misunderstood, because I heard kind of a house comparison come up quite a bit, when you spoke, when you said, well, if we have 80, 85 units or 85 houses. I, when I talked about downtown, I had no, in no means was talking about building houses. I was just, you know, simply saying, we kind of have eyesores downtown, and I'm not, you know, that's all I was getting at with that. Oops. There was somebody in the audience that had said something about, you know, suggesting that there maybe be 80 kids in this apartment complex. I think you said, no, there won't be even near that many. Why? I want to know why your, what your answer is to that.
It's because the vast majority of the units are studios and one bedrooms. Not the vast majority, but only, let's see if I can read without my readers on. 30, 35 units. I'm not, this is actually based on 88 units. I'm not sure what it would be with 85 units. But roughly 30-some units will be two bedrooms that could, I mean, I think it's more likely that the studios and the one bedrooms will be, if they have any kids, they'll be maybe a baby.
Okay.
And that, that's where the rationale is coming from, based on what we've seen with other similar projects.
Okay, no, that's fair. So then I guess my question to that is, how attractive are these apartment buildings if we can't move families into them?
They're...
I mean, you just got to understand that, these aren't, you know, many of these apartments, you know, studios, blah, 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 blah. Well, I would think that we would want more of a family-type thing moving in than one-offs here and there coming in for studio apartments.
That's fair.
I honestly have a renter back in the day.
Yeah, if you could come to the podium, please.
Yeah, come on up.
I was a renter for a very long time, lived in Wicker Lake. But this is the thing, I can tell you that as a renter...
Ma'am, if you could come up to the podium.
Studio apartments were very difficult to rent out, because you just don't have the space in those studio apartments to have your furniture. And even if you are one person, the studio apartment is usually only for a very, very short time. So then I'm thinking, how much turnover are we gonna have, and are we gonna be able to rent out those studio apartments? If we think about one-bedroom apartments, sure, that might be one person, but then again, like, this is a family community. We want to stay family. It's not that we're against people moving here, we're really not. But I think we have a lot of other things we need to fix first, before we move more people in here. This might be a good idea in a couple of years, when our school is bigger and we have one more gas station. But to move in 80 people right now might not be such a great idea. Also, if you have 85 homes, the homes right now are going for almost $500,000. You're talking about a family that could potentially afford a $500,000 home to a person that's renting a $1,500 apartment of 30 people, you know. I mean, the rest would all be like $900 to $1,200. So you probably would have more people that are buying homes being able to come into this section and give more money to the city with taxes and stuff, and maybe be business owners downtown, and maybe build some of the stuff. But renters right now, I love renters, I was a renter. But if I'm renting, I'm certainly not gonna have enough money to bring more business to this town, or do much more.
So, so to both your points, we're, we're really reliant on the people that have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into this project, that they feel that there's an adequate market for the, the studio apartments, or one-bedroom or two-bedroom apartments, that they feel they can lease it out. Ultimately, if the project tanks, the TIF part, I, certain provisions have to be hit, but the TIF part basically goes away. And if they end up walking away from the project, and it's a, they just can't lease it up, they can't fill it up, the bank forecloses on, and there are literally hundreds of thousands, if not millions, in this.
But then we have a vacant property, and then are we gonna have vandalism and all that kind of stuff? Like, I guess my question is, how do you guys know for sure that you guys can get these studio and one-bedrooms rented out? Like, where are you getting your numbers to figure that out?
Well, I mean, there's not a lot of vacancy, even in the Minneapolis metro. You fall in the metro market for that, but it's a bit of a risk. It's a financial risk that we're, you know, that we would take. Nothing's a guaranteed, you know, but we've done several projects, and frankly, this is a question every person asks, every community, especially in high-growth areas. It's usually from the lens of, like, there's so many apartments, why do we need more apartments? And guess what? They keep filling up, and you keep renting them out. People move from older outdated stuff and move up. There's population growth and things like that. But the smaller-sized units have been, the, the studios and one-bedrooms have been a pretty high demand in other markets. We assume this market is somewhat similar to that, to answer that question, I guess. So, it's an answer to that.
I think if you're going to build these schools, you'd make a lot of money.
Okay, I just want to finish my last two points.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So I kind of hit home the whole, the kid thing. So, and if these, again, not to reiterate it, but even if these apartments were attracted, or families were attracted to these apartments, like they said, what are we gonna do about the schools?
Sure.
You know, so I mean, it's, it's that same point. It seems like it's a, it's a kind of a bad thing on both ends, in my opinion. Probably the thing that I've been disheartened the most by tonight was your answer about the policing and you saying that even with the 80-whatever units that you don't think that it would do anything, and that we wouldn't need any additional force. You know more than I do. There, you know, I will say that. You obviously know more than I do about it. I'm not against police. My son's going to school to be a police officer. Love you guys. But this is the problem, okay? I hear you talk about Dakota Avenue and about, I see you, I was always worried about, oh crap, there's cops, better put on my seatbelt type thing, you know. I see you there when I, when my son was going to that school. I know you're there, and I appreciate that. I appreciate you for that. You're keeping, you know, you're keeping the kids safe. But I feel like the whole, like, Dakota to James Avenue thing is glossing completely over people's eyes. I've lived in that house for 11 years. I have not seen one vehicle pulled over on that street. I'm outside all the time. I'm in my garage with the garage door open, working on my race car, working on my kids' go-karts, you know, whatever. I have not seen one vehicle pulled over on that street since we've lived there for 11 years. I feel like you guys are stretched too thin already. And you're telling me, there's gonna be 85 units, how many ever people, and it can just magically just be the same? You know, I mean, I just, I don't buy it. I think you guys are all saying in this perfect world scenario, I don't buy it. Okay? We see it, we live it, we're watching it. We feel like we already have a problem here, and we feel like the problem's gonna get worse. Simple as that.
Fair point.
Thank you.
Can I ask one last question? Is there gonna be, is there gonna be security or, like, property management? Will they, will they live there? Will the one person that maybe does the property manager, you know how like, they always have like a caretaker? Will the caretaker live there, or will they be off property?
Yeah, there generally would be a resident manager, and that resident manager would report into their group back here as the managing entity. But at that size of a complex, we would have one person that lives on site, too. So there would be somebody day-to-day that is, you know, the point of contact before something, you know, needed to escalate further. And living there, too, we found, they have a vested interest in, in what happens there, too. So it really has eyes and ears kind of on-site from that perspective. So that's a good question, too. Okay, last but not least, I wanted to add, this is great input, you know, this is a day and age, that this, honestly, I've done a few TIF meetings. I did one in Omaha not too long ago. Omaha's a town of a million people. You outnumbered them by about 25. So there's two people that showed up in Omaha, and that was, you know, for a bigger number of TIF. So it's great that you guys are, no matter how this ends up, that you guys are engaged and care about your community. So, and that's something to be proud of.
Thank you. Does anyone else care to comment?
Dave Osmond, 266-45, Meadow Lake, Corey. Kind of on that, and the community turnout, I think a lot of that comes from the fact that we have a lot of single-family homes, and there's a lot of investment into the community. People who buy their home out here, make it, plan to make it their home, and have that large investment in the community itself, where a rental property, maybe you rent it for a year, you don't have that big commitment to the community. You're here for a year, next year it might be somewhere else. You don't have that big investment into making this the best community it can be. You just use it for while you're here. Next year, go to the next place. So my best part of the concern from people is, with this new 88 people a minimum, what's their investment in the community?
Fair enough. Thank you. Anyone else care to comment? All right, as we'll close the public hearing, so last call, on once, twice, all right, public hearing is closed at 8:02. Thank you, everybody. I think, you know, like was stated earlier, we did not come here with our minds made up. That we came here and we specifically scheduled the meeting where we vote for a future date, so we can take in the feedback that you have, that we can listen to the questions, we can address them however, as best we can, or we can follow up and get answers as needed. So this is a project that we would all be comfortable with if it does move forward. So I appreciate everyone taking the time out of their Tuesday night to come here, and, yeah, thank you all very much.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
So it was brought up that this sounds like Washington, D.C. I just want you to know, everybody who's up here lives in this community with you guys, okay? We all love this community just as much as you do. And I want to thank all of you for coming here today, to have your voice be heard, because it's super important. And definitely, no mind was made up up here. I mean, we've had other public hearings where we've progressed in one direction, and we've had people come in and provide input, just like we are tonight, and we've listened, okay? So I want everyone to know here that everybody's comments that were made, suggestions, the emails that have come in, we're gonna soak all that in, and we're gonna have that discussion and make a tough decision. It's not gonna be an easy decision, but it's gonna be a tough decision. But your voices are being heard, so please know that we want you to continue voicing your concerns and keep coming forward and coming to these meetings, because without you giving that input, we don't know the best direction to go in, as a town as a whole, as everyone is relaying that information. We, then we're guessing, right? We're guessing, and we're not giving that information from people. So, thank you, thanks for coming, but just know that we're your neighbors, too, and we care just as much as you do.
Well said. Anyone else make?
Ditto that.
There's no...
Thanks for showing up. It's nice to talk to other people.
Any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Let me just make one more.
The original plan, and it was probably indicated in the launch report, was that the city council would take action on this at their meeting next week on October 14th. That may not happen now. The development team may need some additional funding to renew contracts that Dave was involved in. So I would say it's fair to say that next meeting where action is taken, we'll probably post on, you know, the young city website, maybe on Facebook. That will not be a public hearing. It will just be discussion by council.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
This is motion by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Kate, on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.